Previously convening the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of Delmar College at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, November 14th. I'm going to call a roll to establish our quorum. Mr. Kruel.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Abert.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Mr. Loeb, would you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us in reading our Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time. With the exception of portions, the meeting is considered closed session by statute. We have an opportunity at this part of our agenda for any public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here for general public comment?
Saying none.
We will move on to start of our program today. I'm very disappointed, Dr. Halcom, we don't have any recognitions today. You're (laugh) work on that for December. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda today is to hear a student success report. We're going to invite Mr. Dan Corus up to talk to us about the state of our business and workforce development programs. Mr. Corus, welcome.
Our economy here in Corpus Christi is very strong. In fact, we see it through the work of the Small Business Development Center Corporate Services in our workforce development programs and in transportation training. I'd like to go through these quickly and share concepts, trends, a little bit of history, and a few highlights. In fact, something special that we go through is we have the opportunity to work with businesses from mom and pop stores up to multi-billion dollar companies. And we get to have the presence of understanding what they're going through and how we can best serve them, starting with the Small Business Development Center. Our Small Business Development Center has been active since 1998. You can see some of the numbers, but one thing that's very unique about our Small Business Development Center, our SBDC, is we are part of a package deal because we also have the Procurement Technical Assistant Center, or APEX, the Contract Resource Center, the Small Business Internship Program. And we have a plan room, and it's all housed in one location. We also are part of what we call the Texas Southwest SBDC Network, which includes basically all the counties south of San Antonio, west through El Paso, and down through Victoria. And so what that does to us is compared to all of our colleagues in our network, we have more resources per capita compared to all others. We have 13 staff members. We're funded by type B to 150,000. The state has a part, about 23%. The Fed has a part, and then we have a match. You can see some of the numbers up there, but the trends that we've seen over the last five years, we took a dip during COVID, however, where you see jobs created and retained. There was a huge spike going through COVID and even before COVID during Hurricane Harvey. We excelled in providing support to small businesses. And with, I have a package I could give you all that comes from our network that shows that for every dollar that we invest in the SBDC, it produces about $4.41 in returns. When it comes to our numbers, I think our numbers is three times that amount here in our region. We also have a Contract Resource Center. This is a concept that was birthed with the idea that how can small businesses do business with the billion-dollar companies? The CCRDC supports us, and they funded us, starting in 2019, to the tune of 150,000. We have two, we have two staff members that support that. It started in 19 and 20. Because of COVID, we were in a survival mode, but in '21, '22, we broke a million. And this year, we almost broke eight million in commercial contracts. You can see the number of jobs that we've retained, the number of things that we're working on. But a few highlights, we do events with GCGV and major companies. And recently, we did one with Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and it was sponsored by Cheniere. And our clients were the ones that received, I think, two $10,000 grants. And so it shows that whenever we're working with locals, we're producing. We also have the Small Business Internship Program that it couples our students through the chairs and the instructors to small business. And so this came over to us a few years ago. It's funded by type B again. And after, I think this is going into our third year, we have 60 employers. We have 68 students this year. We're on track to spend all the money that was given to us, but the highlight is they have created 10 full-time jobs, and it's another asset inside of the community. The APEX Accelerator, previously known as Procurement Technical Assistant Center, the whole concept is how do you do business with the federal government or with county, state municipalities? Because government is so complicated, how do you get in there? And so we're part of the APEX system that's a federal or nationwide system, and we cover nine counties. About 90% of the funding comes from federal funds, but we're also funded for our plan room through type B at about 105,000. One thing is when you see the numbers up there, those are real numbers. Last year, the year before last, we had broke 200 million. I think we were at 268 million in contracts. This past year, and the trend is with the increase in federal funding through a lot of the different funding mechanisms, like the infrastructure bill, we saw more money coming down from the federal government, and we were in a position to capitalize on that. So this past year was our banner year at 433 million. And then they have a formula for every $50,000 that we generate, it creates a job. So this was the highest year that we've seen. And right now, we have, in that system or in that program, we have a staff of seven, and they put a cap on us. And so I think this will be the one program that continues to grow. When it comes to big business, another piece that we work with all the time is big business inside of corporate services. Within corporate services, we do a lot of different things, but one thing that we do is we end up connecting our college to the major businesses, and we service them. Part of our approach, too, is there's a trend in the economy that if you can train your employees, the retention rate goes up, and we've had the opportunity to do that. Offerings that we've seen as a growth engines includes leadership, industrial trades, Lean Six Sigma, and then there's a huge one with emergency response. And even in the emergency response arena, we're very thankful for the college and the investment we've just made for the facility that we just stood up. And we have, right now, companies getting ready to come and do more training than ever before with us. Also in grants and apprenticeships, we, this is the same concept that we're using, we're training companies, except we're using state funds. Last year was another banner year. Some of the different arenas that we get into is jet grants that support the ISDs and our own programs. And also, when it comes to apprenticeships, we're currently carrying about 480 apprentices through DOL apprenticeship programs. And the trend is there's more money coming from the feds when it comes to apprenticeships. When it comes to initiatives, workforce initiatives, some of the things that we get involved in is hearing industry with specific needs. The challenge that we run into on the credit or even on the CE side is putting some of these courses together in a timely manner. So our opportunity has been, because we're an NCCER facility, we can put programs together and support industry with the goal that we'll have about a 90% placement rate. In fact, most of these short-term programs fits right into House Bill 8, somewhere between 80 and 120 hours of coursework. And then at the end of it, they're ready for a job. Another opportunity that we have, and we use two banner programs, one having to do with QWIT. They hire all of our graduates. And another one is BEKTAL. But the good thing that we have, the good thing that we have the opportunity to see is people that have been in the justice system are trying to prevent recidivism. We've been able to pull those people in, send them through these programs based on a cohort model, and then they can go right into a job or into an organization and stay in that cohort. And right now, from our feedback, typically, we're somewhere in that 80 percentile, that they stay in their jobs and they're succeeding. Another one that has been very successful is our Code Camp when it comes to workforce initiatives. Understand there's been an ongoing National Science Foundation grant that we've had with Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi for the last 10 years. It started with GIS, then it went to UAS, and now it's IA. And working inside of that grant, we've been running Code Camps since 2018. This is a sixth camp that we've had. We had, we didn't do it during the year of COVID, but this last year, what we did was we were able to take graduates from those programs, from the Code Camp program, and then bring them back as mentors to increase the persistence. So we see a bright light ahead on those programs, especially the stats following up and tracking these post campers since 2018. Over 70% have enrolled in STEM clubs such as engineering and robotics and stay engaged in STEM activities. So it's a proven fact, it's a proven pattern, that whenever we have these students go through these programs, they get in and they stay in. Finally, this is just a couple of snapshots. We work very closely together with Davis Merrill and the credit side when it comes to helping the college achieve certifications. Two of them that we're working on or just received was the American Welding Society and the National, the North America Process Technology Association. I think we're going to have a follow-on presentation in the future about how well these programs are doing. But the great thing is we're recognized by industry as being leaders because we're giving them exactly what they're asking for. Also, what they're asking for is more maritime. Right now, we are up to about seven U.S. Coast Guard-approved classes, and we're working on three more. We've had this program underway, that's a nautical term, underway for the last five years.
Weren't you a naval officer?
Yes, sir. 21 years, sir. And so we've had this program underway for the last five years. We've had an advisory group, and so we have about a dozen maritime companies local participating. And some of the consequence or spawn-offs that we've had is Rockport ISD now has a maritime program and NCC ISD as well.
Yep, at Carroll High School.
Yes.
We'll wait.
Finally, I always save the best for last, our transportation training. This program has been running for the last 25 years. The last three years, what's been very interesting is since COVID, we've seen about a 25% jump in students based on the demands that's in the economy. In fact, the past three years, we've broken a million dollars in revenue very easily. The challenge that we always have is inflation in fuel. So that's one of our challenges, trying to work through that. But we don't have a challenge with getting students. Our challenge is being able to serve them in a timely manner because the backlog is usually four, six, eight weeks long. In fact, this past year, with the help of my friend, the CFO, we were able to wrap all of our trucks. That was something that we'd been working on for many years. So if you see around Corpus, the mobile banners that was put together with the help of the CFO, college relations, and a lot of hard work. I think we tried to show all of the options that Delmar has and show them continually in our program. One last high point, this past year, I think Ashley Leva, they came, she came and saw the board back in whatever, February, March, April, sometime. And, but she was the winner of the 2022 Transition Trucking Award where she was placed as number one in the nation in this competition. And she not walked away, but she drove away with a $150,000 kennel worth truck. And so on a national scale, folks know who Delmar College is. Very thankful. With that being said.
I just wanted to recognize Dan as the dean of Workforce Development and Corporate Services and what all this, you see all the programs that they've attributed to, and really serving all of our students when you think about what Dr. Eskemia says, when we serve all students here at Delmar College. And I'd also like for his staff to stand, please, that are in the back. Under Dan's leadership, this is truly an amazing team that reach out into the community in multiple counties surrounding us and in the workforce and do a fantastic job. So thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Corus?
I just had two comments. One, I hope we can give this presentation to 4A and 4B at the city if we haven't because this is a good way to summarize to them how their money's getting spent. The other is, I just wanted to tell everybody, you know, the apprenticeship programs, I was having lunch with a friend who works at one of our large employers a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him how business was, and he said, "It's great. We just got all these new federal contracts, but we have this huge problem because all these contracts require apprenticeship programs, and we have no idea how to do that." And so I said, "Well, we can do that," and passed it to Mark, and Mark passed it to Lenora, but so...
Who passed it to Dan?
Yeah, probably passed it to Dan. And so I say that because, you know, we need to talk up ourselves because there's people who don't know that we can do these things. And that's a, you know, this person was kind of the person at that business where all hard problems go to get solved, and they had no idea how to solve it. But, and I think we solved that one, but it's an opportunity for us to go out and talk to people in the community and get them to engage with us because it does appear that the feds are serious enough about apprenticeship programs where they're writing them into contracts. And so we need to push out and tell the kind of people who get federal contracts, "Hey, we can, we can set you up in an apprenticeship program."
The good news, if I may respond, Regent Loeb, is the good news is Dan is very familiar with that, with that company. And so when he showed up, it was no, there was no need for introductions. That's great news. But generally, Regents, the comment that I'd like to make about this presentation is that whether it's the SBDC or Corporate Services and all, all these other nuanced programs that are very, very tailored to the particular partner, partners that we, that we meet up with are all because of that team back here, led with Dan. And then they also bring in some of our credit faculty, too, at times, to assist as well. But it's a very nuanced part of the curriculum. These are seedlings that are being developed, and I'm starting to see some saplings already, if I pardon the metaphor, because that maritime program started with A-class. Where I said, "Dan, what, look, this big old body of water that we call the..."
Gulf of Mexico.
"Corpus Christi Bay and the Gulf of Mexico and so forth probably need to do something." So it's a, it's a slow-growing sapling, albeit, but that will be much bigger in the, in the future, I dare say. And it's good on us that we have a retired naval officer helping us put it all together. So anyway, all that to say, this is, a lot of these programs have been developed. This, this truck driving program from where we were just a few short years ago is just a different, it's a trendsetter. It's the envy of a lot of colleges around the state, and that is for fact, and around the country for that matter. So kudos to the team, and I just got to say thank you personally from my office, and great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So to follow up on what David was talking about, it's, it's not just local dollars and local interest. There are, and I'm sure you all know this, community benefit plans are a part of most federal grants right now. So whether the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act all included in their grant applications, community benefit plans, one portion of which is education workforce slash internships and apprenticeships. And so our ability to help those that are receiving for-profit entities, nonprofit entities in terms of research dollars, all of those include community benefit plans, which include workforce, education, and internships. So there's, I think there's great opportunities for those programs.
And there's a piece of HB8 that has, that will be supporting this, so stay tuned. Y'all already nodding, okay. They were...
My question, my question related to that is how do we, so not 100% of what you, what you do and what your team does does not get counted in HB8. There's a growing portion of it, but there is still a portion that does not, and so, or...
A small portion that does.
Does, that does.
Smaller portion.
And so when we answer the questions for HB8, I always want us to keep in mind the yes and of what Delmar College does. Yes, we, we document, and we're going to do it in a way that is going to, that is going to answer the questions from the state and federal government, but we also do these things that don't even get counted. And so I always want us to make sure in our key performance indicators, in our communications with constituencies locally, that we are making sure that we are providing that full picture. And so it's that kind of aggregate data that I think we want to see on a regular basis and make sure that, yes, here's the numbers that, and they're going to, apples-to-apples comparison to other community colleges across the state, and we do this.
Yes, because it is a big and. It is a huge enterprise for the college, and we've, these are, these are future programs, and other colleges are looking at us and wondering where many of our CE programs came from, the ones that have been stood up and are pretty robust. Will they start from this area of the curriculum?
Yeah, in fact, using the seedling analogy, very often when we're working with companies, and the trend has been over the last five to eight years, especially COVID, is how can we do it faster? Shorter and faster and more intense. And so we're always on that cutting edge. But in the middle of all the work that we do with these different companies, I would say 90% of them all have tuition models that they, if their people go to school, they will reimburse them. So that's a planting mechanism that we have all the time saying, "Hey, guess what? Now you're a Delmar student. Just because you went through a class, you get a transcript, you get recognition, and the question is, come on back because we have a lot more where that came from."
Thank you very much, sir. Good job. Our next item on the agenda is our college president's report, and he's got quite a few items to share with us today.
I do, I'll be quick, Madam Chair. So on the later part of September, Vice President Patricia Benavides-Dominguez was selected to serve on the Coordinating Board's Rulemaking Committee for Dual Credit. I want to thank her for volunteering. See, she and Leonard, between her and Leonard, you know, I submit their names, and I tell them a week later, and then they always get selected. So volunteering is part of business here at Delmar College. But seriously, congratulations. You'll be in the inner workings on setting the rules because we still have a couple of years' worth of rules-making to go as it relates to HB8 and the like. And so thank you, thank you for that. I did ask her permission-ish. So on October, middle of, middle of October, the Community College Leadership Team Meeting was held. I participate in this. This is a group that's a, I want to say it's a, it's a group that's led by Commissioner Keller, and it precedes these, these rules-making. It meets ahead of those rules-making groups, and myself and a few other CEOs and so forth meet with Commissioner Keller and TAC staff to kind of hammer out ideas. And so we kind of just listen and make sure that as these proposed rules that are going to be for consideration, brought for consideration to the committees are thought out and/or at least considered by us. And it's a consideration, and it's a courtesy that the Commissioner of Higher Ed gives us, and we're very fortunate for that. I'm glad to be a part of that, and we continue to meet on that. October 19th was a really fun foundation scholarship dinner held out over at the Winward Campus at the FEMA Dome. Do we have a better name for that, FEMA Dome? Do we just still call it the Dome? The Dome, okay. Well, it's a dome. Anyway, hint, hint, foundation folks. But the dinner was held, and it was jam-packed. That place, there wasn't a room to sit, and it was just a beautiful evening of gratitude for both sides, beneficiaries, the benefactors, giving and taking and receiving and being thankful and so forth. And I think there was 400-plus people. Must have been, is that right, Matthew? Yeah, 420? Yeah, good golly. It was, it was jam-packed, and what a beautiful evening that was. And thank you for those who were in attendance. Okay, I can't say the name, but I do want to say that we had a donor supply, provide for the catered meals there, and that was a nice contribution that made it easier for everybody, including our own staff. But to that individual, thank you. I've already thanked that person personally. On the 25th was our TAC quarterly meeting held up in Austin, and I was in attendance there. And the next one will be in January. November 1st was the, again, the Community College Leadership Team that I was talking about earlier. There's already been two of those meetings. Again, we, I want you all, I put this on here for you all to know that I stay in close touch post HB8, if you will, or at least at this phase of it all, and remain on that, on that team, even though I'm no longer an officer at TAC and so forth. But because of our participation on the, on the commission, I remain very busy with them. November 10th, I want to thank, that was just this past week, I did not get to attend this one, but I wanted to mention that the Gulf Coast Growth Ventures leadership team is making adjustments, and people are changing in and out, and there's some new faces there. And I want to thank Leonard and, excuse me, I'm sorry, Lenora and Dan and others who led that visit to the campus and of the Winward Campus. And Lenora, can you just give us a little snippet how that went?
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Eskemia. The team hosted, really the operational leadership team for Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, which was made up of representatives from ExxonMobil and SABIC, which is, of course, Saudi Arabia Basic Industries. So we were very pleased to host them. But in addition, I wanted to thank Gulf Coast Growth Ventures. They presented scholarship checks of over 35, or for $35,000 in total. And I think this is getting close, Matthew. I think this is getting close to $1.7 million total from Gulf Coast Growth Ventures over the last three years, three or four years.
So they show, yeah, how about a round of applause?
They're major contributors.
So they show up for a tour, and they bring checks for students. How wonderful is that? Yeah, I saw that. I don't, I don't know if we were expecting that or not, but it was, it was a wonderful thing. Regents, this concludes my report. I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Eskemia. Are there any questions for Dr. Eskemia? Saying none, we'll move on to our Regents Report. We had a number of Regents who were able to attend the ACCT Leadership Conference Congress in Las Vegas. And so wanted to give opportunities for those who attended to share a little bit about what they learned. Who wants to go first? Dr. Babaly.
As a first-year Regent, I found that conference very informative, educational, several sessions. I've gotten a good handle on the national structure of community colleges and how that all fits into the higher education structure of the United States. I mean, this, that was an amazing revelation to me, how powerful this constituency is in carrying out its mission to its communities. I've met, you know, leaders from northern Arizona, desert communities, who are doing incredible work in community colleges. And behind my, you know, I had Delmar College as a framework to understand how things are working. you know, I had Delmar College as, as a framework to understand how things are working. And I'm so proud that what we have here is, is an amazing jewel in the crown for our community. I think we should all really, truly take the word out even more effectively to our community, to see how, how well our community, our, our Delmar College is serving our communities, and the potential it has for the future. And several sessions in terms of understanding how the budgetary aspects, how dependency on our state, and our communities, and our counties, are all quite truly educational for me. And I think that gives a Regent a chance to contribute more constructively, with, with a full knowledge of how it all fits into this framework of, you know, bringing everybody into the accessibility and affordability of higher education in our communities. So, that was really an educational experience for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Babaly. By the way, I wanted you to know that you are being talked about at the national level. There is a discussion about ACCT getting more involved in international student programming, and taking learnings and methodologies and organizational structure of community colleges in the US, and looking at how we might be able to help internationally with higher education initiatives. And apparently, you had a conversation with someone, and so I made a reference to the CEO about your experience. He said, oh, no, we've already talked about Dr. Babaly. So, I think you might be getting voluntold, much like Patricia got voluntold to do something. I think you might get voluntold to do something at the national level as well. David?
I'm glad. Thank you.
So, I, I kind of focused on basic needs programs, and, you know, I learned a lot of interesting things. You know, there was one community college that talked about how they changed the name of their food pantry to Forgot Your Lunch, Forgot Your Dinner, and their usage quintupled, because calling it a food pantry created a stigma, and students didn't want to be seen going in there. So, I mean, I think that's kind of an idea on, you know, maybe there's some simple things that we can think about. At Chairman Scott's urging, I attended the Under 45 Regents Conference, which was a lot of fun, to be among other Regents who are the only Regents at their community colleges that graduated this millennia. They all really liked that joke. They took that one home with them. I went to a really interesting one on LA County and LA School District, or LA Community College, and, or LA County Community College and LA School District, which are, I think, either the first or second-largest community colleges and school district in the country, about their dual-credit program. And the interesting thing was, I think we were ahead of them on pretty much everything, except they are, they are working on what they call opt-out enrollment rather than opt-in enrollment. And so, their concept is that when you sign up for high school, you're also signing up for community college, and you have to make a special effort to not sign up for community college. You have to opt out rather than opt in to dual credit. And I, I thought that was really interesting. And then, I went to a couple on marketing and outreach, and I think there was, Southern Louisiana Community College has an interesting program where they use Salesforce to manage their outside relationships. So, everybody, all their external partners are in a database. They log all their contacts. When one of them changes, they, they change it, and so, they make sure that there's a person assigned, whether it's, you know, a staff member, a Regent, a faculty member, where each one of their partners has a matching partner. And that doesn't mean that's the only person that calls them, but then they, they log, you know, when do they get called asking for money? When do they get called to come in and, and help out with a class? And so, I thought they had, they had a very interesting level of organization. And they said, you know, they kind of got to that, because when they had a strategic plan, everybody kept saying, you're the best-kept secret in our community, and they said, we don't want to be a secret. And so, I thought that kind of had special relevancy for us, given some of the feedback we've gotten from our partnerships. But it was, it was a great time. I had a lot of, a lot of fun with everybody, and Heather didn't lose too much money at the slot machines while we were going to our meetings. So, great. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Rudy?
I also always learn a lot. When I go to the national conferences, I attended a session on social media, and basically, the basic message was that it'd be good for people throughout the entity of the organization to reach out. If you're doing an enrollment effort, everybody's social circles are different, so it might be prudent to include your Regents, your staff, your faculty, and, and certainly, your marketing team, in order to be able to reach out and try to increase your enrollment efforts. And there's other areas in the, in the, in the things that you do that, that are also dependent on good, strong social media presence. I attended another one related to new, creating a new enrollment model. They talked about adult, for adult learning, and we're doing a lot of that already, with their programs now related to shorter semesters, or shorter sessions, eight-week sessions, 16-week sessions. Those shorter sessions lend themselves to really being dynamic in terms of responding to current trends, or current, current changes in, in the workplace, and what, what the needs are going to be for students right now, that the students that you have, and students that might come back for retraining after, after they've already received their credentials, but are finding that some of their, their jobs are being displaced, and they may need to come back in for some retooling. So, attended another session related to apprenticeships, and again, a lot of the stuff that we're doing related to apprenticeships is great work. Some of the areas that we're talking about apprenticeships that I attended had to do with more closer alignments, or closer relationships with labor unions, particularly the skills, skills labor unions, like the carpentry unions, the electric unions, plumers' unions. Funding strategies for mental health, that's one that Libby and I attended, and today's students are really complex, and have a lot of challenges in front of them, and dealing with some of the mental health issues, and their basic needs, and where do they go to for help? And how do you fund those efforts to try to help them? Because that's going to also, that's going to have an impact on your completion rates. And so, again, how we look at those type of challenges, and how we address them, is something that, that we need to consider. Thriving and, and surviving and thriving, they talked about students that come from homeless, part of the homeless population, or students that come from foster homes, and they, they already term out. How do they, how do you look at trying to make sure that you help them enter the, the higher education process, and be able to get the, the help they need in order to be able to succeed and complete their, their instruction? The one that I found the most interesting in the sessions that I attended was actually the first one, and probably the most challenging for me, because I had, had a round of drinks with a nephew of mine on Fremont Street the night before. So, I was a little raw, and I went to this particular, I went to this particular session, had to do with entrepreneurship and transforming the community. We talk about community enrichment, and trying to make sure we, we help our community. And there was a community college in Tallahassee, Florida, and their community was challenged with the fact that they had the BP oil spill, they had a couple of red tide blooms, they'd had a couple of catastrophic issues, hurricanes, things of that nature. And they decided to take the bull by the horns and create their own, I'm going to say, efforts related to economic development. And they created a big, huge center where they wanted to clean up their environment, they wanted to, to retrain fishermen. The, a lot of the people that worked in that area were third- and fourth-generation fishermen in, there in Florida, and they, so they set up oyster farms. And some, some of the things that our own representative, Todd Hunter, and Brad Lomax, has been touting and pushing at the state level here. But they set up oyster farms, being run and trained by people in the college, and people that, that had some marine experience. They created new, 300 new jobs, and over 150 new businesses. And it's totally, we're blessed in the fact that we're, we're in an environment where we have all this industrial investment coming in, we've got all these corporate partners, we've got all this activity going on, and that's an area that's really rural, and they had to come up with their own, I'm going to say, recipe for being able to, to create some economic activity. And so, again, when we go forward, and we're looking at workplace opportunity, we have a rockboard, we can't fit them into some of the stuff we're doing here regionally, we may look at something that's totally outside of our wheelhouse, in order to be able to make sure that we create the economic or the entrepreneurial opportunities that they need in their community. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Rudy. Libby?
Thank you. I want to, I want to take my time to congratulate Chair Scott on her appointment to the, her election to the ACCT Board of Directors, representing the Western Region. And, and to thank you too, Carol, for your service at the state level. You know, you all know that this is a volunteer gig for us, and the time that you spend on service to Delmar College is extraordinary, certainly surpasses anything any of the rest of us do. And after having been to a few of these national conferences, I think how it benefits all of us to have Carol serve on this board, is it really does put us at the table, puts us at the table to be among the first people to truly understand, know, talk about, have some input on what's happening to community colleges across the country. I think we certainly saw the benefits of that at the state level, when it came to finance for community college, and having you there to help that discussion, and then make us prepared to anticipate what was coming our way. And so, thank you for frankly sacrificing your, your time, and energy, and brain power to represent us, and then to bring all of that knowledge and those relationships back to our benefit. So, congratulations, and thank you for being willing to serve. Lori?
I always enjoy going to the national convention, because it kind of, I get to look at other colleges and see what they're doing, and I always have this mental comparison to us. Are we doing the same thing? Where are we in conjunction with that? Because I also went through a lot of, we ended up at a lot of their sessions together, because we're looking at basic needs and community outreach. One of the sessions that I went to had to do with, then, the college, the community college is upstate in New Mexico, and they are trying to reach the Navajo population. My kids are part Navajo, so I was very interested in that, and how, and their, their idea was making a medical center, because there's a, in, in serving a rural population, it's really hard for some of those students seeking and receiving medical care, and, and that was a driving force that where a lot of those students are missing classes because of medical needs. So, I was very interested in how they, how they started the process, and that communication piece, and where they are today, where they're actually going to be having, the medical center actually will be opening up in the January. So, they're almost there, and they're going to add mental health, and just basic needs for medical care. So, I was really excited to see that happening in that part of the state, especially way at the four corners, when they have a huge population. I also sit on the ACCT Education Committee, and I was able to have a nice discussion with other trustees and student trustees. And we really focus on the gaps between trustees, of how we see things, and how students see things, and how can we merge that gap between students and trustees. So, we had a really nice conversation, and we have some action pieces to do in that committee coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for taking your time to, to go to the national conference. I think what, what staff could potentially hear out of this is that we're doing all that we, all we can as Regents, spending additional time to, to learn, and to, to find out what other communities are doing, and what other college and trustees are doing. And so, as you all progress in, in your work, feel free to send stuff to Delia and say, hey, the Regents might be interested in a program here, and she'll shoot that out to us to, to learn more. Because we, we are all very definitely willing to, to learn, and to recognize that, that the few hours a month that we spend at this table, and working on your behalf, is nothing in comparison to the 40, 50, 60 hours a week that, that some of our faculty and staff spend at, at your work. I'm not even counting Dr. Eskamia into that equation. But, but please give us an opportunity to learn from you all as well, and to, to send things our way that you think might be good for our edification, because we are willing to look at what's happening out in the rest of the state, and in the rest of the country, and look at best practices and things that we can bring back to this board table, and certainly to the college as a whole. So, I think you've got a Board of Regents who's very willing to do that, and, and is anxious to, to learn, to continue, to continue our forward progression. We, I don't ever like the word reform, because it sounds like you've been doing something wrong. But we all know that higher education evolves as situations evolve, and so, I think your Board of Regents is very willing to educate themselves and to help in, in that evolution. So, thanks for the opportunity, and thanks for those of you all who were able to attend with us. With that, we're going to move on to our staff reports, and we've got one staff report today on student enrollment, our continuing conversation on how our student enrollment numbers, and how we report those numbers are changing. And so, Ms. Keys is going to start us off.
Yes, thank you very much, Regents. Today, you're going to see a similar report as last, as we do annually for enrollment, with basically looking at the data as to how we've progressed over the last year in credit, continuing education, and in our special programs. However, this is also going to be a three-part look, in that next month, Jeff Olson, Vice President of Marketing and, and College Relations, is going to present a focus on our students, and really how they've been impacted by House Bill 8, and how that's impacted enrollment. And then, next spring, after the rulesmaking finalizes, or takes the next step forward anyway, in February, we're going to put together another presentation on the overall impact, with more details of House Bill 8, and how that has impacted enrollment, and how we're going to move forward with that. And so, this is part one of three parts, if we could set it up that way. As, the agenda for today is, we're going to look at an overview, as I said, of House Bill 8, and how that's impacted enrollment. But it's also going to show the trends of credit, continuing education, and dual credit, and then persistence, and how that ties into our first two goals of access and persistence in enrollment, and how that overviews into we move forward. And so, it's looking a little bit at the past, but also as we transition to the future. Over the past many years, we've been evaluated on what we consider to be a base year on a biennium or two-year basis. This is transitioning and changing as we move forward, too. It will be more on an annual basis, and we'll be bringing, bringing you numbers that are more annualized, and we'll get those as they come from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. As we've noticed in the past, and much of the numbers you'll see today, has to do with contact hours, and headcount, and enrollment. However, as we move more into House Bill 8, it's going to become more tiered, performance, student-based, and outcome-based, and credentialing-based, is how we measure those outcomes. And so, you're seeing a transition within this report, as from the old way of more being funded on contact hours and success points into this new model. This is an overview of really the 17 basis on which we can receive funding as we move in House Bill 8. However, as we look at those 17, we've been able to compile them into 10 key areas. And this is that tiered outcome measurement that we'll be looking at as we prepare the students, as they enroll, and are advised throughout their degree plans, and move forward through the different courses over the next year. As you notice, we're looking at 15 semester credit hours of dual credit in, in a career path, in a career pathway. It's also measured moving forward. Right now, our team is working diligently with the high schools and the ISD, so that this becomes more and more identified. Your general academic- Your general academic courses and as they transfer out is another point area. As you see, all the different areas, particularly in our associate's degrees and certificates, we're receiving additional funding and at a higher rate. Those types of details as far as the dollars and the percentages, that will be in the subsequent presentation that's coming because some of these definitions are still being identified as we get rulemaking in February. So, this model on which we were paid for this year, or funded by the state, was really preliminary and a compilation of the last three years. And so, that's why today it's more of an overview and the next time hopefully be much more specific. This is the calendar on which we offer semester credit hours and then continuing education courses. And if you notice, they don't specifically align. Where we have a semester, a semester basis for our credit, which starts in beginning of the spring semester of your odd-numbered years with the first, after the first 16 weeks. And so, as you move forward throughout the year, that's how we look at the academic year for credit hour calculations for credit courses. However, within our continuing education programs, you're looking on a quarter system which starts really more with the beginning of March, and we have the four quarters that rotate through. And if you notice, it's quarter three, four, and then one, two. And so, it gets a little confusing or can be when we're reporting the data as the beginning of a semester. It's like, we always like to know, well, where are we as September 1? Well, in September 1, we're still triangulating different semesters and quarters as far as data. And it's just a point to be aware of. This calendar is not changing as we move forward into the new House Bill 8. Last year, coming into this, this budget year, we looked at over $115 million operating budget, and as you see, over 16.9 or almost 17% of our state appropriations had to do basically with contact hours is how most of that was calculated. However, we did receive a new model which allocated the funds at over a three-year average as it related to our student tiers and how we had progressed within awarding of the 15 hours through dual credit like I showed, or degree plans or certificates. So, this was the transition budget year really as we moved into the funding as to how it was calculated and funded for this almost 17% of our monies. The state contribution for benefits pretty much remains the same. Every year, we receive a little bit more in the budget depending on your number of employees. This chart shows the impact of our base year funding in the biennium as we progressed over the previous six to eight years. However, when we're looking at this year, '24, '25 really, it's projected for one year. And this number is looking at, showing you the different allocation as to how we looked at the credit course programs and then the continuing education and our core operations. And this will be changing over the next few years, and we expect to be presenting this in a different manner in our next reports.
Let me understand your numbers. It's actually '23, '24, not '24, '25?
Yes, and that, well, yes, but we always call it the '24 budget, '20, '24 budget.
Okay.
And probably the 20-
I just think it's labeled wrong, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, '20, '25 should have been left off. The number, it should just be the '20, '24 budget.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
But it, you're right, it's the fall '23 into spring '24, so. Okay, now, Vice President Patricia Benavides Hernandez will follow up with the next several slides that deal more specifically with where we are with credit and the impact that the credit has had on our enrollment. Patricia?
Thank you, Ms. Keys. In reviewing our spring headcount data, this slide provides the headcount for spring 2019 to the current year, which includes flex entry data. The slide shows enrollment trends. We continue to focus on eight-week, increasing eight-week courses, which is added to our data flex point. The college experienced a slight increase of 6.1% in spring of 2023. The fall credit headcount bar graph provides the historical count beginning with fall 2019 to the current and shows us basically flat. As you can see, we are down 0.35%, 35%. Pardon me?
Less than 1%.
Less, less than 1%. The credit contact hours provides a historical perspective on the credit contact hour overview from 2018 to 2019 to the current year. The chart illustrates contact hour trends among the years illustrated. Headcount and contact hours are increasing. This means that students are taking more classes. And, do you have any questions? Because I'm now gonna turn over the presentation to Dr. Leonard Rivetta, who will transition us into the continuing education and credit data moving forward.
Thank you, Patricia. Appreciate that. Now, this is a remarkable data here. It's highlighted for you, for your reference, but you'll see that Delmar was the top in the state with regard to contact hour reimbursement with $2.2 million. And I think that's a, it's a milestone in my opinion. Dr. Eskimia would probably would hopefully agree with that, in that we're leading the state, all 50 college districts with that type of CE production. And when you look at the total funding, we're actually, as far as our peer institutions are concerned, we're top three at $18 million with state funding, total funding including the contact hours for credit and contact hours for continuing education. So, again, a lot of great information here just to get a picture of how we compare to our peer institutions. Our next one slide here is regarding our quarter semester-
I'm sorry, hang on a second, Leonard. Did you have a question, David?
I was just gonna say, we were top amongst all large colleges, or we were top, like, we got more CE contact hours than-
Within our peer institution of large colleges. But I would dare say we probably were top in the state regardless of our category.
Yeah, no, we're fighting above our class, so to speak. As it relates to the very large colleges, we even surpass several of them. I think there's the big eight, and out of those, we're somewhere in the middle there for production still. And then, one anomaly in here that I always like to point out for the newer regents is that Blinn College, you probably recall, Blinn College is considered our peer, but it's much larger than we are by credit headcount. So, just, that's, we put an asterisk there for future references. Thank you.
I would say this, and this is just a side note, we, Lenora and I get calls all the time from Lone Star, Houston, Blinn, South Texas College. We get calls about how do you get this kind of production on your CE? And so, I, I believe we run a very innovative and outstanding CE program overall under Ms. Liz's, Lenora Keys' leadership, so we're very fortunate that we have that going for us. Going on to our next slide, again, our quarter semester annual headcount for continuing education depicts that we have about a 2.4% over the '21, '22 quarter, I should say, annual headcount. So, that's positive. You see that we're at 7,200, a little over 7,200 students that we service through our continuing education areas. The next slide provides a indication of our annual enrollment more of on a calendar year as opposed to a quarter year. As Ms. Keys depicted earlier, you saw how the, the calendars don't match up when you look at the funding. We go through a quarter on the CE side and on the credit side, they go through a semester more of an annualized. And so, this depiction is more on an annualized, if we could kind of put things in such a way, and that we are depicting or showing a increase of 10% in our annual enrollment over the '21, '22 school year. And that's in continued education enrollments. So, I think that's a great, great depiction of what kind of production our continuing education programs are producing.
I have a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
The, the note here says a student is counted as many classes they enroll in. So, if a student rolls in a carpentry class and a welding class, that's counted as two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Except for headcount, yes, as Ms. Keys said, it's a headcount, you know. Enrollment and headcount are two different metrics. Enrollments are exactly what the, as you described, Mr. Crowell, is that it's many courses that a student takes is what they get counted for on enrollment. Headcount is, it's just, it's not duplicated. Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir, of course. And this slide is obviously showing us the annual contact hours for credit and continuing education for the particular academic year. We're looking at our '22, '23 year, which again is still preliminary, we're still gathering more data, and we're showing just a, about a, a little bit, a little over 3% decrease over the '22, '21, '22 school year. But again, I would caution that this is still preliminary as we're still gathering on the CE side and I think even on the credit side, some flex data and other enrollments that we're still gathering as we go forward. So, I just want to point that out for your information. And as we transition to House Bill 8, credit and continuing education combined contact hours, this is just showing the regents and the audience how we're tracking currently as we compare the fall semester. This is a fall comparative. So, we're looking at the fall '23 compared to the fall '22, and we're actually showing right about a 2% increase over the last fall of '22. So, again, looking great in that aspect. Will continue the trend upwards again as we get more data probably for the fall because on the continuing education side, we're still enrolling students, we're still programming all the way through December. So, that number probably will also, also edge up a little bit more as we go forward in time. And then, we look at the headcount similarly, so we have a almost 6% increase again when we compare the fall to current year '23 to the fall of '22. So, almost 6%. Again, that's phenomenal in my opinion, and so, we're tracking very well. Headcounts are important in my opinion because when we look at headcounts in House Bill 8, what we have to understand is Ms. Keys has just done a great job at explaining is that they depict performance completers, and that's exactly what House Bill 8 is aiming to do is the more headcount, the more folks we have in that funnel to serve, the more likely we'll have more completers, and more completers transitions over into more revenues for the As, as to those 10 categories that Ms. Keys explained to you earlier. Transitioning over to our fall dual credit headcount, we're looking at the five-year oversight or view, and right now, we're looking at this slightly, it's under 1% decrease over the '22 fall semester. And so, we're still tracking upwards as again, we're still rolling for the second eight weeks. So, again, the second eight weeks still in play. And so, again, I would assume that number will also edge up as we go forward in time. But again, this is just the latest data we could show you as we ran this data just a few weeks ago. So, we want to make sure that you understand that data is, is daily, is moving upwards and it's just very, very fluid as we go through the daily processes.
So, let me understand your, your, the comment you just made that we're still enrolling second eight week, or that we, this doesn't include second eight week dual credit?
Second eight week dual credit, yeah, there actually is dual credit for second eight weeks, and so, those numbers haven't been all come, I mean, where we have started this semester, but those numbers will still be tabulated as we go forward in time, to be clear about that.
And your previous fall numbers include those both?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And did we see, did we see a result from our acceptance of the FAST program scholarship dollars?
Yes, that's a good, that's a good transition. So, again, FAST, Financial Aid for Swift Transfer, that was something that was indicated under House Bill 8, a great piece of legislation, but I dare say so myself. It impacts not only credit but also continuing education. And, and so, we, as a college under Ms. Keys' leadership, launched that initiative, and, and so, we did work with as many school districts as possible that wanted to work with us towards that end. So, we're, it's, it's a work in progress is what I would say. So, as we go into the spring, there'll be more, more, probably more schools that want to opt in to do business with us on the FAST program, where that is where the state reimburses us $55 per credit hour on every dual credit enrollment and CE enrollment as well.
So, will we be able to analyze a cause and effect of, of offering those scholarship dollars?
Oh, yes, sure, absolutely, going forward, yes. And I think it'll be more clear certainly as we get a full year's worth of data under our bills right now.
Okay.
And I'll say this, we're probably one of the few colleges that actually went off the gates and offered this. A lot of colleges, you know, they're just, you know, didn't know enough. Luckily, we have Chairman Scott, Dr. Eskimia, myself on the rulemaking, Patricia on the rulemaking committee. They were in perfect position to understand the FAST program and House Bill 8 parameters, so that's helped us in our decision-making process. Another great set of data is, is this, is that, this is talking about our dual credit seniors that matriculate into Delmar College. And so, in the '21, '22 school year, we had close to 1,200 students. You'll see that in the first box where students earning a college degree while in high school before they graduate, we had about 11.5%. That's remarkable. It's great. And as we go into the next box, those that actually matriculated into Delmar entered and were admitting to Delmar or just transitioned to Delmar was almost 30%. Dr. Eskimia?
Keep going.
Okay. And then finally, final box is those students that earn a college degree or credential value within one year completing high school, and that's right about 12%. So, overall, we're looking very well on these metrics. We continue to, to observe these, and I feel that we're, we're trending upwards where we need to. And as we enter the FAST realm, I suspect these numbers are gonna further increase, especially as we look at the first box where we have 11.5%. That number I would imagine is gonna go up even more than that going forward in time. Any questions?
So, you mentioned that the numbers, you're expecting the numbers to go up with, do we have enough faculty to support the increase that, I mean, what is the increase that you're expecting? Have you talked about numbers or kind of played with that? I know that a lot of your dual credit programs are online-
Yes, ma'am.
And students are in their classroom.
Correct.
But I was just wondering, have you-
As far as our ability to credential more faculty to service the onslaught of more dual credit students.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna segue to Ms. Ms. Keys to, or maybe Dr. Howcome to address that question.
At this time, we have enough faculty to meet the dual credit demand. As it goes up, we will, you know, search for more individuals. We consistently have ads out for additional people that can be fully credentialed. We do credential some faculty that work at the ISDs already, and then some, we do send some of our full-time faculty out to the schools, or we do some online instruction as well. So, I feel that we can meet the demand, yes.
Of those 1,186 students in that cohort, so those were seniors who graduated-
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have the ability to look back and understand and calculate how many had at least 15 hours when they graduated? Because that's, that's the new-
That's the new metric, yes.
That's the new metric, and so, I didn't know if we had the ability to look back and help us understand what might happen in the future based on past performance. And then, number two, those are the folks who matriculated to Delmar College-
Yes.
And do we know of those 1,186, how many matriculated to another community college or, and we do. I know we know where our students go, but of that cohort, do we know where they went?
Not really, no.
Not really.
Because we get the, we get the information from the state or from the, or from the other colleges, and they do it, they don't do it by individual student. You do it by numbers and by from that school, but not by student.
Mm-hmm.
So, you would be looking at it, because the dual credit are, in with all the graduating seniors that go to, say, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi.
Right.
They're not just, we don't have a cohort of that. Now, we probably could get it from A&amp;M Corpus, I'm a friendship deal, but our sharing of data-
data, but from the state itself, no.
And in the, in the state rulemaking and the changes in data collection, is that part of what dual credit is now going to be reporting to high school? I mean, how do we, how do we prove that number?
We're still waiting to see. We are still waiting to see so much on this rulemaking from the state on individual student cohorts.
Because rulemaking is dependent upon the data.
That's right.
And the data collection has not been there historically.
If you notice, this is '21, '22 data.
Right.
That's how far back the state is right now in giving us this type of data.
Yes, yes. And I agree, being on the Rulemaking Committee, that's just something that other colleges are challenged with because their systems aren't set up to be able to track this type of data. But the Coordinating Board is obviously working with the colleges in tandem and to ensure that there's flexibility as we go forward so that we all could get caught up with the impetus or the cadence of House Bill 8 going forward. So there's going to be a little bit of probably give and take as we move forward over the next few years probably so we could get a little bit of an understanding of how we collect this data. And data is going to be very important, you're right, in proving exactly what we have with regard to co-enrollments, transfers and of course, 15 semester credit hours being earned by students and even some of the other categories that Ms. Keys mentioned. We have to be able to ultimately prove that data going forward in time, so. And final slide that I have for you this afternoon is our House Bill 8 impact. And this is kind of summarizing exactly the House Bill 8 strategies that as they impact our strategic plan here at the college. And so we have Goal One completion. Again, as I said earlier, completions are going to be the key to funding under House Bill 8. And so we want to be able to implement those strategies tied to the House Bill 8 performance tier outcomes measures. And we're working with in our continuing education areas, credit areas, dual credit areas, so we can optimize those completions. And it's going to be so important that we optimize those completions if we're to optimize our funding on the college's cycle. And then Goal Two, under recruitment and persistence, obviously we have to be able to bring students and attract students so they can become completers. And so again, it's working within our own strategic initiatives through our Student Affairs led by Patricea Dominguez and other faculty and groups that are here to get us to implement those strategies tied to House Bill 8 and get more students in the pipeline so that we can service them and they can become productive citizens and also earn a credential of value going forward. So this concludes my presentation. If there's any questions for any of the others, please, we're available.
Any other questions?
So 40% of dual credit students either graduate or come to us afterwards?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I'd say we got to, we got to market hard because I think, so what you were saying on the, on the numbers, we don't have the second part of the semester in those numbers yet? Or we only have part of the second part of the semester?
Correct, yes, yes. I mean, we're still tabling the data. The data, you know, it's, as we enroll students, there's probably a bit of a timing, you know, in getting the, running the reports versus the real numbers. And so we always want to present our board with solidified valid numbers that we report to the state. And so these are still based on preliminary numbers at some juncture, so.
And?
Yes.
And some school districts, we have the agreement in place and some we do not and that's in progress?
Yes, I mean, most school districts that we do, we have MOUs, but again, some schools were a little still, I mean, it was so fast, it was so fast in getting implemented that some schools just weren't able to turn around to react quickly. But as we go forward into the spring semester and certainly as we go into the next school year, those numbers will increase. And then we also probably attract other school districts that we personally don't serve that want to be served by us.
Okay, I think like at some point, if we could get some sort of update on like who's signed on and who hasn't, because I guess, I mean, I understand this is the first semester and it was kind of, you know, oh, you have some commitments to do this and they may have signed up for it, but they didn't, nobody had time to market it to their students or parents. But I think, I think working through that with them is really important.
We'll have another report in the spring as well.
Great.
Comparable to what here and given whatever information, whatever other information we learn, we'll incorporate it and it'll evolve. And that's what Vice President Keys was talking about earlier.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was a way, so we can measure, I like measuring the data. I'd like to see the headcount from the service districts and see how many are, how many, you know, how many students Flower Bluffs sends and I would like to see all the service, what their headcounts are and then when we look at the next, you know, and we can do a comparison. Are we increasing? What needs do they need? And so we can start tackling some of those issues, especially if this is going to be the new go, so.
Yeah, I just saw similar data to that or I saw that version not certified this morning and so it exists and that's, that's easy to. It's, okay, understood. We could get that data. We'll see where it's appropriate. I don't know how to incorporate into a report like this necessarily. It'll be backup, backup information that I think we can put in the packet in an addendum or something like that to, to support what we do in the spring.
One other thing, I think some of the feedback I've heard is a lot of athletes have an issue on doing dual credit, you know, if it's stuff where they have to come to us, their sports commitment conflicts. And so I think some summer programs that are designed around, okay, you're making a commitment to come in, you know, two or three summers and we've got a course load for you to take and they're the same as our current courses, but where, you know, you don't have to worry about conflicting with their sports or whatever their other activities are. I think some of that would also help us boost and get more people ready.
So I just had breakfast with the interim superintendent from Flower Bluff yesterday. We were talking about that very thing. He also happens to be the head football coach. So stay tuned on that. But no, that's, that's something, I'll tell you, it happens all the time and my wife has been telling me about that for years. She's like, we need to get some for these boys and girls, young ladies and young men for the summer. I've been meaning to reach out to you all, I hadn't gotten there yet. But again, I just met with Superintendent Steinbruck yesterday morning at length and that was one of the topics of conversation because athletics is a very difficult thing. It's a high, and not just athletics, but other extracurricular programs that are very stressful on their schedules and so forth. And we've got to figure out ways and summer is a way to do that. And so thanks for that.
Dr. Rivera, I appreciate and don't want you to change your Goal One and Goal Two here, but I'm wondering if there's a third goal or a subset of Goal One that is around the transfer for us to be able to understand and document not just the dual credit transfer but the overall transfer. And I think that's, that's a piece that when we send our, when we send our transcripts on, can we have them sign a waiver that we get to, we get to follow you for the next five years to see what you do, something that helps us with that transfer piece as well?
Absolutely.
I know you know that, but I'm just saying, I wonder if the House Bill 8 impact, we shouldn't be talking about transfer as well?
In fact, the last Rulemaking Committee we had, it was last week in fact, that was a, that was really the whole contention of that discussion was around transfer and co-enrollment. And so how do we track it? How do colleges track it? How do we not lose, you know, students in that pipeline so we, so the college can get credit for those transfers and co-enrollments? And so more to come, I got to assure you, as we go through that rulemaking process, it'll be more defined.
We had the discussion about uniform student ID numbers and those kinds of things and that didn't make it into the final report, but we understand that that's, that's a part of this whole conversation as well as everybody assigns a different student ID number and then how do you track all that information?
In fact, yes, they actually have under FAST, they already have identified a particular number the state will use starting spring. They were of course not wanting to go with their social security numbers for obvious reasons. And then so they have identified a unique number that will be tracked by TEA and of course likewise, colleges will be able to track that as well going forward.
I have a dumb question.
Yes.
So if a dual credit student does not filter into Delmar, when they ask for a transcript, did they just go through their prospective high schools or do they have to get a transcript through Delmar?
Get a transcript from Delmar.
Okay, so you know if they're just moving on to another college, you would, you would see that, right?
Yes.
Well, they get it free from an automated system.
Gotcha, so you may not know if they're, you're not, gotcha, thank you.
We should start tracking that.
I would say also on the, on the tracking in the transfers, being able to look at those cohorts and see how many of them were educationally disadvantaged, it would be good information to have when we go back for another round of funding.
Yes.
Because I imagine what this is, what this is going to say is that this is a very effective way to get first-generation college students.
Yes, sir.
Educated and we want to be able to stick a number in legislators' face and say, look, we saved these families and you as a state this much money for all these students that we were able to accommodate and serve, you know, give us some of that money so we can expand.
That is the number we have. We don't have a lot of numbers, but that's the number we have.
Okay.
Because that's what we're going to be paid on, yeah. We've done that number.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. As you, as you can tell, we have a lot of interest in this and how it impacts us and the opportunities and challenges associated with this and, and we appreciate the fact that it is transitional.
Yes.
So we're moving from the old way of reporting to a new way and just bear with us while we learn more too.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Regents, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we have our pending item list. In December, as Dr. Villarreal already told us, we will look at our current strategic plan and get an update on Goal Two. And then we've got some discussion around our tax abatement yearly review, look at the Coordinating Board's strategic plan and any changes that have occurred there and how they're documenting our progress towards their strategic plan. We'll look at, we'll hear from Matthew and hear about our foundation yearly update. And we'll begin to talk about our student charges for next spring, for a decision around next spring and then do our annual contract review and look at our policy review schedule. Everything else is there as listed. Any questions on our pending item report? Hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have in front of us, our consent agenda items one, two, and three, which is approval of minutes, acceptance of investments, and acceptance of financial reports. Do any of those items need to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I moved it.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly, second by Mr. Loeb. Any questions on that? Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our regular agenda, we're going to have our college's quarterly investment report. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the Board of Regents. Today we have Mr. David Malkoway from Patterson Group, a member of the Media Investment Company, who will discuss the college's investment performance and strategies with a backdrop to today's economic conditions. Following the presentation, there is an action item for the board's consideration.
Good afternoon and thanks for having me back again. The third quarter report here, jump into it. We are continuing to see the Fed's actions paying off as far as bringing down the rate of inflation. We're starting to get some cooperation with employment growth is starting to trickle down. Unemployment rates are trickling up slightly. So we are seeing the fact that the economy is starting to simmer down a little bit. That was part of their goal, obviously, in fighting off this inflation rate. Interestingly enough, as we concluded the end of this, you know, August quarter, you know, the Fed was coming up to a September meeting in which they paused and then subsequently they paused again here just a couple of weeks ago. So we're starting to see a clear trend that they're nearing the end of the road. It's two consecutive meetings of not raising rates, three out of four now. And having come off of last year at this time, we were at a full ramped-up escalation. It's a welcome sight to see, but obviously, you know, these higher interest rates are muting the appetite for housing as, you know, 30-year mortgage rates are now 7 and 1/2 plus percent, got up around eight at the peak a few weeks ago. But again, everything that the Fed has been aiming to do, they're slowly, the numbers are starting to prove out. The one thing that's still a little slow is that core CPI still in that, just below 4 and 1/2%, but it too has made its way from like 4.8 down to about 4.3. So slow and steady is hopefully going to get us to where we need to be. The, the fact that the Fed has paused here at the last couple of meetings, it's interesting to note when we look at the Treasury yield curve, the inversion that had been very steep, it's starting to flatten out a little bit because the longer yield, the longer maturities are starting to come up while the short rates have stayed put. And now they're starting to trickle down after the Fed's commentary here from the meeting that just wrapped up. They've got one more meeting that's going to take place in about four weeks, around December the 12th. But closing out August, it was interesting, there was still a 50% probability that markets were anticipating one more rate increase. And after the employment data that came in, the most recent employment data, that dropped to about 30%. And then in, in the wake of the Fed's latest comments, the market is now anticipating down to only 10% chance that the Fed may go one more time between now and January, which is only two more meetings. So again, we're, I think we're getting closer to the ninth inning of what the Fed is probably going to do there. As far as the portfolio itself here for Delmar College, August was, the, you know, debt service payments were made, you know, about 80% of the debt service gets paid out in August, the principal interest there. The portfolio remains very short in terms of the weighted average maturity. There's been a lot of spend down between the 2020 bonds completely spent out during the last quarter and it just leaves us with a little bucket that we'll go over for the 2018 bonds. But you can see the overnight, there was such a, you know, spend down, all the cash for the debt service had been residing in the pools and the portfolio now has continued to roll down the curve. 73% of the maturities are going to roll off here in the next 12 months. And that was 12 months from August 31st, so we're clearly continuing that trend down. One to two-year, we've remained light, but the good news is we're coming into tax collection season. We're starting to see a little bit of funds flowing into the coffers already from that effort. And we just, we just did an investment last week for six months at a 580 yield, which is, you know, it's a welcome sight as some of these lower yields that were purchased during COVID are out and off the investment reports. The portfolio, including, you know, both bonds and the local maintenance, 75% of all the college funds are now in the local maintenance account. There's still 21% resided in the 2018 bonds and there was, you know, a little bit, about 4% in the interest or the debt service accounts after the payments had been made. But closing out, the fourth quarter itself is highlighted there in yellow versus the previous three quarters. And, you know, if you look across that top line, you just look at it from a book value perspective, you know, coming out of the Q1 before tax collections, you saw the total portfolio increase from tax collections and then start to work its way back down. And now we're hitting the low water mark probably right about now since we are starting to see some tax collections coming in. So we finished out at 80 million from a book value perspective. The weighted average maturity of the entire portfolio was just around seven months. The average yield, while it was just below 2% and it was a decline from the previous quarter, that's primarily a function of a lot of cash that had been sitting in the pools, earning around 5 and 1/2% getting spent down. That has nothing to do with the active reinvestment of any funds there. So when that number, again, it looks a little quirky, but that would be the explanation for why you saw a decrease in that column. The total fiscal year earnings obviously was much higher than the previous fiscal year. You saw it continue from Q1 through Q3, it continued to almost double quarter over quarter. And then that last column again is just primarily a function of, you know, we saw a $32 million decrease and that was just outgoing funds between construction and between construction and debt service and operating payroll and things of that nature. You had a lot less money trying to earn interest there. And then just comparing, you know, how the portfolio allocations were, there wasn't a whole lot of change from May to the end of August, with the exception of the fact that, again, the cash levels went down a little bit. The CP maturities that were short-term, a lot of those just went straight out the door when they did mature. And that's where you saw the CP go from 24% to 11%. And then just comparing the yields of those individual sectors there, there wasn't a whole lot of change, with the exception of, you know, commercial paper, as we did have some, you know, a little bit of reinvestment there. We got a little bit higher yields on the reinvestments. And you can see the pools continued, you know, to carry the highest yield on average, just because they were best able to react to all the activity of the Fed through the end of August. And then again, 2018 tax bonds, we began Q1, we ended with just under 23 million. We wrapped up the fiscal year at just under 21 million. You can see how the weighted average maturity continued to come down as everything in that portfolio has just remained intact. The average yield there has stayed the same because it's been fully invested. The total earnings on that portfolio, again, kind of remained somewhat static. The 2020 bonds is where, you know, we started off Q1 with about 21 million in that account. And you can see by the end of August, those funds had been fully spent. So the, you know, the only funds remaining are the 2018. And based on my conversations with the staff, the anticipation would be that the majority of those funds probably get spent out over the next fiscal year or two. And that's just a depiction of the remaining construction funds. 82% is invested in agencies, and the remaining 18% is in municipal bonds. Other than that, I try to keep it sweet and simple and open it up to any questions y'all might have.
Any questions for Mr. Malkoway? Thank you very much for being here with us today. We do need a motion to approve this investment report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Krul, seconded by Dr. Babaly. Any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you next time. Next, we have an item related to the discussion and possible action relating to the San Patricio County Appraisal District Board of Directors election. Mr. Rivera is going to talk us through how to use our nine votes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of the San Patricio County Appraisal District, Delmar College has the right or gets the right to vote every two years for their Board of Directors. They do this in accordance with the procedure that's set up in the tax code. And you have been informed that you have all of nine votes out of a possible 5,000, along with a lot of other taxing entities. Because you take the right to vote very seriously, and I mean that, you get to consider and deliberate who you would like to cast your votes for. You have previously been presented, there it is up on the screen, with the official ballot, so you can see the nominees who are up for election to the board. And I submit it back to you unless there are any questions to further deliberate on how you want to spend all of your votes. And you don't have to vote all for one person, you can divide up, you can do whatever you want with nine votes.
Mr. Loeb?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote all nine for Dr. Anne Matula.
I second.
There is a motion by Mr. Loeb and a second by Mr. Garcia that we cast all nine of our votes for Dr. Anne Matula. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I would only ask that you also add that you do so by appropriate resolution.
And we do so by appropriate resolution. Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, adoption of the motion is stated. Please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Rivera? And then subsequently, we also have an appointment for the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. This is a little different, a little different process for you, same tax code, different appraisal district. Here in Nuasis County, you actually have the legislative right, the legal right, to appoint a member to the Delmar, I mean, sorry, to the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board. You announced this back in September, provided an opportunity to the public to submit letters of interest, together with any resume or other information. The period for submitting letters of interest was last Wednesday at noon. You received two, but in the interim, one has been withdrawn. So for your consideration is the letter of interest and resume submitted by Ms. Deanna Hevelin or?
Hevelin.
Hevelin. And it has been, it is in your packet. And again, leave it to you for further deliberation and discussion. This is, again, it's a little different, and there'll be more on this, there's more to this that'll be coming, will be forthcoming at a future board meeting. But these are typically for a two-year appointment beginning January 1, 2024. But as a result of the constitutional amendment that was recently passed at the statewide election, there's going to be a change in how members are appointed/elected to appraisal districts throughout Texas. So more to come on that. But for now, you do have this pending appointment to make.
Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Hevelin as our representative to the Nuasis County Appraisal Board of Directors?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Babaly, seconded by Mr. Loeb. I couldn't tell who said who. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption or appointment of Ms. Hevelin as our representative on the Appraisal District Board, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. That motion passes. Ms. Pettis, would you write a letter to Mr. Chapa on behalf of the board, and I'll sign it, expressing our thanks to him for his years of service as our appointee on the Appraisal District Board? And then I think we're going to look for an opportunity for Ms. Hevelin to come and introduce herself to the board, maybe our next meeting, and have an opportunity for orientation with yourself, myself, Dr. Eskamia, Mr. Johnson. We'll try to help her get educated on our opportunities and interests before the Appraisal District Board. All right.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you very much, sir. We were able to do all of our closed session needs during our workshop this morning, so we do not have to go back into closed session. We do have a calendar, just want to look at our calendar items for the next couple of months. We want to wish all of our employees and faculty and students and staff a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday next week. We hope you enjoy your Turkey Day. We will have our regular board meeting early in December, on December 5th. We've got a couple of members who are planning to attend the Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference the next week in Austin. So we're doing that board meeting a week early. We will have both our season celebration on Friday, the 15th, as well as our graduation that evening. Do we have anything to announce about graduation, Dr. Eskamia? Not yet?
Yes.
Oh, we do?
We have just confirmed that our new fire chief, Chief Wade, will be the keynote speaker.
Wonderful.
And I just saw him this morning.
Wonderful.
To double confirm that.
Great. And then winter break for the college begins on December the 20th, and you all come back to work on Wednesday, January 3rd. We will not have a January regular board meeting. There's a possibility we could have a cold meeting. And then our regular February meeting will happen on Tuesday, February 13th. Anything else for the calendar? Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting at 2:40 PM. Thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving.